I have a few extra agenda. Agendas here if anybody needs them. Alice apologizes as she can't make it this evening, so we're gonna go off with the record. You guys have your agenda?
I got it.
Anybody needs an agenda outside?
Right here. Thank you, Ben.
First order of business will be to accept the minutes of May 7th, 2012. Can I motion to the other?
I'll make a motion.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, so carry. Next, we have some reports. Is Mark Lundgren here? No. Okay, I will read you his report from the Haddam Senior Center.
Is this a joint report for the aging?
No, there's a separate report.
Okay, separate.
Yes. Okay. "Weekly Aerobic Exercise in Tai Chi." Did I pronounce that right?
Tai Chi.
Tai Chi.
Tai Chi.
Thank you. Should've let you know that. "Have no less than six participants at each gathering. These exercise types are especially suited for seniors and preventing falls through better balance and strength. This is always room for more. On the 9th, 42 seniors traveled to the Wyndham Technical High School Culinary Department for a great student-prepared and served lunch. This was a good wintertime trip and everyone wants to get back. The March trip is to the new factory visitor center at the PEZ." So I guess that's the Pez Candy Company. "The meal site was closed on the 13th for holiday, so we had 29 seniors chip in for pizza from the DaVinci's in Iginum Center. Once they heard where we were going to have the price drop immediately, we then decided that the extra money would go to the center's fund. A good time and a fundraiser to boot. On the 14th, I attended the Committee on Aging meeting. At noon, 42 seniors gathered for a Valentine's lunch. Friday, the 17th, 22 seniors attended the discussion on peripheral neuropathy put on by the Middlesex Hospital Occupational Therapist, Ms. Kristin Whitaker. Being clueless about this topic, I was pleasantly surprised by the participation level and that it went on longer than scheduled. The hospital has been a great resource. Tuesday, the 21st, was the monthly Haddam 350th Anniversary Time Capsule Committee meeting. The committee has been reaching out to all organizations for donation to the capsule. The seniors and Haddam Elementary second grade are collaborating on interviews and pictures for the capsule. We look forward to visiting the school on March 27th. The quick early morning snowstorm of the 24th closed the center. The scheduled concert with singer musician storyteller, former Haddam resident Ken Sweetie, was postponed until March 2nd. He was great and everyone wants him to return. As you can see, there's a lot more activity going on at the center. We are trying to be supportive and flexible in some of these trips and it looks like it's working out well." Any comments?
No, just very happy with what you've been doing with the seniors. Even prior people who are running did a great job as well. What you're doing, you've done fantastic.
Good. Good. Okay. The next report we have is for the Connecticut State Police. And this is dated through February of 2012. The 2012 report from town of Haddam, the major investigation events. "In the beginning of February, there was a burglary at the Valley Bible Church. Working on tip, Trooper Connolly and Trooper Millardo were able to solve the burglary at the Valley Bible Church. With this tip and subsequent investigation, the investigation was able to solve a total of seven burglaries that occurred in both Haddam and Haddam Neck. Also, back in February, three home invasions occurred in Haddam. Investigations developed a suspect and a warrant is written for the suspect." I'm gonna just divert for a second. I had some discussion with Trooper Connolly and Trooper Millardo and they wanted me to emphasize how important it is for anything that is irregular or concerning that you do report. And even the smallest thing, any stranger in your neighborhood that shows up twice. A strange car that just happens to linger too long and things that you may not think really are important, they're just a phone call away and it just kind of logged in. I think that, you know, that would be very helpful. Personnel shortages, there are none. Personnel issues. Trooper Connolly will be going in for shoulder surgery on April 2nd, 2012. Due to the surgery, Trooper Connolly has been told by his doctor that recovery will take at least five to six months. Trooper Tom Topolus will be replacing Trooper Connolly while he is recovering. I have not met Trooper Topolus yet. He's supposed to come in next week for a visit and we'll spend some time with him, kind of giving him away a land. There are no IA or I-81 cases. Facility building problems, there are no building problems. Accident investigations. Motor vehicle accidents with injuries, just one. But motor vehicle accidents without injuries, there were eight. Motor vehicle arrests, warnings. There were motor vehicle infractions, 118. Motor vehicle warnings, 28. Motor vehicle accidents with DWI, fortunately none. On-site DWIs, none. So criminal investigations, burglies, there are three. Disturbance and supply, larceny, five. Medicals, two. Suspicious incidents, 13. And patrol checks, 185. Fatal accident investigation, there were no fatal accidents in Haddam, thank God, the month of February. Okay. Any comments on any of the reports?
No.
Thanks. Okay, our next report is for the Municipal Agent for the Elderly. "I would like to first thank the First Selectmen for the opportunity to serve the elderly of Haddam in this important capacity. The support of the entire board is greatly appreciated. Now, I know very many of you know the distinction of the Municipal Agent for the Elderly, but it is required by law that all 169 towns in Connecticut have someone available to be aware of all the services that are available for the elderly and to seek out other services that may be beneficial to them. That's everything from IRS services to housing, to medical benefits, to things of this nature. It's a concentrated job that is spelled out very specific in one of the Connecticut statutes. It's monitored by the state of Connecticut and training is available and periodic auditing, things of this nature are made. It's in conjunction with the Committee on Aging as well. Even though the municipal agent does not sit on that committee for the most part, they are there as a participant and hopefully help them to expedite their programs. It's a significant job and we're really grateful that Mark Lundgren is being able to do this separately from his position as the Senior Center Manager. The Senior Center Manager is a facility that is really designed to help the services for the seniors, the community, their social, psychological, and sometimes spiritual well-being. When you get to the Municipal Agent, there's a distinction that there's a responsibility to help them with the things that are necessary for their age group in the eyes of the state. So it is law. So it is a distinction. So when you hear these two terms, it's not as though you go to the Senior Center, have a good time, and talk to the agent of the... Oh, they're totally different functions." "I have been in contact with the State Representative for Municipal Agents, Ms. Carolyn Jackson, in order to arrange for orientation and training as soon as possible. I have received the handbook and yes, there are many programs that I know of. Understanding the qualifying procedures will be the key. I'm working on getting the word out regarding my function and how I can be contacted. I have already been involved in a few issues. Two seniors needing heat assistance. One complaint of a fall smell in the home, a drain had to be drained out. And one ongoing giving assistance to a quarter." Okay, I'm gonna change that because you misspelled that and it should be actually giving assistance to a border. I'm sorry. I understand. An article will be in the next Haddam Bulletin regarding my function. Good. I met with the Committee on the Aging and am starting the planning of the annual seniors picnic. Once some details are available, I'll inform you for June event as you are, unfortunately, invited. Again, any services that you feel that you, of some seniors that you know, some neighbors, anything that you see and identify that there may be a need, you know, rather than just acknowledging and letting pass, give Mark a call. Let him know, you know, what you think, what you're observing. We want to take care of our neighbors, in particular, our seniors. And we are very, very, very fortunate that the winter was docile. But, you know, we really want to be sure we keep a vigilance for our seniors."
Good thing, one, we might have known better. Oh, no. The other thing is, I'd like, in addition to what Paul said, I would ask people to make an active step towards contacting seniors that they may know. You may be surprised, some of you, or some of you may not be surprised, how many seniors we have in this town that are in danger, that are not taking care of themselves, they're malnourished, they're lonely, they don't have people, they're dealing with a lot of ailments and, you know, since they're alone and they're used to taking care of themselves, they don't know when to reach out. And some of them don't have the faculties to understand that they're in need. So if you happen to know any that you might put on a radar as needing assistance, you know, stop at the house, ring the bell, make a phone call. Because we are here for them, town's here for them, and Municipal Agent is the first person to build it, but they're here for them as well.
Good. Paul stated, thank you.
Who was the agent?
Mark Lundgren.
Oh, Mark is also one.
Yes, yes. Yes, he's both, both separate, interesting.
He was the First Selectman, you know?
Yes, he was, in 1982.
Yep. Well, that was.
Yes, it was, just like yesterday.
He knows all my stuff.
Yes. Yes, he does. We are honored tonight to have Tom Worley with us to talk about the Kalkapotsen Regional Greenway and the stewardship initiatives that Tom has begun. Tom, want to give us a benefit of your thoughts this evening?
Sure. Thank you, and thank you for giving me some time on the agenda. I don't know whether you have received a copy of this report.
That might be my watch, yes.
And this tells about an initiative that I wasn't responsible for starting, but have found myself involved in for other reasons. This is entitled the Non-Fetisic Kalkapotsen Regional Greenway. And it describes a geographic project that gives some official recognition to green infrastructure that exists between the, all the way down in Westbrook at the Stewart McKinnon Wildlife Refuge and up through protected lands and public lands, forest lands and habitats throughout the Lower Connecticut River region, on our side of the river and up through Haddam. And what the Connecticut River Estuary Regional Planning Agency and some other partners would like to do is see that a sort of an imaginary line is drawn around portions of the towns of Westbrook, Clinton, Killinworth, Chester, Deep River, and Haddam to recognize the important green infrastructure and forest resources in this area as an important environmental resource and have it recognized by the state as a regional greenway. What does that mean for everybody? Well, not too much. It doesn't come with any obligation for any funding. It doesn't come with any rules or regulations. It's merely a recognition, if you will, that these resources are important. And each town has been asked to indicate a show of support through a resolution at the Board of Selectmen, you know, recognizing that they're in support of the Greenway idea. And the Boards of Selectmen of Westbrook, Clinton, Deep River, and Chester have approved the resolution. Killinworth takes it up next week. We're hoping that you will consider the resolution this evening. The reason I am here speaking to you is because I am working in a partnership with the folks at Crepa on a separate program initiative that dovetails with this somewhat, which is more of an outreach educational effort to private forest landowners. We conducted a survey last fall, an online survey. Was informal. It wasn't intended to be research or anything like that, but merely to find out what's on the minds of landowners. Most of our forest resource is in private hands. And so if we are interested in maintaining the services and benefits that we get from the forest in terms of clean water and clean air and habitat, pollinator habitat and all of those things, we need to understand the concerns of private woodland owners. So we conducted a survey last fall. We sent out some cards and asked people to go online and fill out the survey. And I brought some copies of the raw results of the surveys, the questions, if you'd like to look that over. And as a result of this, we're embarking on an educational initiative this spring and summer with some programs going on around the region. We've sent out a letter with a calendar of events and to woodland owners and asking them if they're interested in coming to one of these. And learning something about, you know, everything from assistance for landowners to chainsaw safety to small-scale harvesting and, you know, virtual pool walks and that sort of thing. So I brought a copy of the calendar and the letter that we sent out to landowners so that you're all aware of it and these are things that are going on in our communities. And I thank you very much.
Good. Thank you. The resolution, yeah, the resolution calls for the town of Haddam supports and the establishment of the proposed gateway and through the Connecticut River Estuary Regional Planning Agency to be publicly recognized by the Connecticut Greenway Council for official state of Connecticut Greenway designation. Now, this is the first time you guys have had an opportunity to really look at it. What I would suggest is that perhaps we digest all of this and get some info from Crepa and perhaps the next meeting that we can vote for a resolution? Is that what, are you comfortable with that?
Put on the calendar next meeting.
We'll put it on the calendar next meeting. All right with you, Tom?
Thank you, Tom. Nice to see you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Paul and Herbert. We really appreciate it.
And let's see. And leave a copy of these things for the... Have bulletin interest, they're interested in that?
I'm sure they will be.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks. And this is all ours here as well. Our next item on the agenda is Regional District 710 from the Board of Education.
Given that it's budget season, I have nothing new to events to report, but I'd be more willing to answer any questions from anybody here or those who are selected.
Yeah, I have a question. The superintendent had, if you know, superintendent had offered and had had a schedule of going to different public places and speaking about the budget. Do you happen to know somebody, I felt one of the senior center and if you don't, if you know, then I'll see if I have the...
I might have a close to. Anything that's scheduled for this week, if there were, there was a death in his family, so I know he's taken the rest of the week off.
Okay. I want to ask before people who are interested, the superintendent...
There was a, I'm sorry.
You go ahead, yeah.
There was a meeting last night for input from all the townspeople, which was held in the central office. I know that there's probably gonna be one more like that. Unfortunately, of all the documents I have on the board, I don't have that calendar. I can get that information to Sean tomorrow.
No, it's okay. I was just gonna, if anyone is interested, the superintendent I know had scheduled, had offered to go out in different public places and speak about budget and answer questions and things like that. I don't know the dates, I just know in the coming head, one of them was supposed to be the senior center.
I'm pretty sure he did the senior center.
And he did the senior center, and he did another public one and another one's gonna be, I think, Killinworth. But if anyone is interested in listening to the superintendent talk about the budget and ask questions, you'd probably go to the website?
Uh, yes.
You go to Regional Center's website and find out and then, you know, attend one of those public sessions if you happen to have them. Thank you.
Interesting thing came up this week, Steve, I'm not sure if you were, now Kathy, you know, the First Selectman of Killinworth and I met with Howard Thery with regard to some programs that are new that are coming through. I set up for the Workforce Alliance and basically, which is a national program, in particular in this area, what we're trying to do is to help our people out of work, the young people, in particular in this particular area, to get jobs that would be helpful to the region as well. There is a grant that's available to seek out positions or jobs for young people that would be for the benefit of our smaller businesses in town. Drugstore, you know, for the summer. These are summer jobs. So what we're doing, I'm going to contact our Economic Development Coordinator and through him, we're going to try to contact the businesses to let them know that this program is in existence. Howard is going to be looking into dovetailing through the school. So he'll probably be mentioning this to...
You have a book, sorry, what's in that report?
It's called, it's called Workforce Alliance.
Workforce.
And this program is designated for kids for the summer. And we'll have, I think, either six or eight positions between Killinworth and us that we'll be able to grant.
Just for post or pre-grads?
This is for pre-grads, yes.
Yeah.
Kids in school. It's a good program and Howard's very, very helpful in trying and coordinating it. Okay. Thanks, Steve.
You're welcome. Anybody else have a question? No? Okay.
Thank you very much, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got some correspondence this evening. This is the Connecticut River Estuary Waste Program. Selectmen, attached is the resolution authorizing Viola's Agreement for one more year. The agreement on price was to keep the, for household cost at $40, households which is the same as we had for the past three years. The setup price has increased from $320 to $332. This is only one increase of $144, which is spread across the group. Please present this resolution in the Board of Selectmen's meeting to sign and get it back to Crepa for the 2012 HHW season. If you have any questions about this, please let me know. Resolution asks for, whereas the town of Haddam has an interlock of local agreement with all other Connecticut Estuary Regional towns to participate in a regional household hazardous waste collection program at the Essex Household Hazardous Waste Facility. Now, therefore, it would be resolved that the Board of Selectmen of town of Haddam is willing to enter into a contractual agreement with the Viola Environmental Services, which will serve as a facility operator for one-year agreement. Annual reevaluations would be consistent with a consumer price index increase and evaluation of the previous year's volumes. Contractor services for the facility are to begin April 2012 and run through November 2012. Now, therefore, the town of Haddam acknowledges the Connecticut River Estuary Regional Planning Agency as the only entity that will represent it in the agreement with Viola and further authorizes the executive director, Linda Cross, or her successor, to sign and execute all necessary applications, contracts, vouchers, contract modifications, and appropriate necessary to the execution of the contractual agreement with Viola as properly appointed. This is standard, consistent with exactly what we had the year last year, and I'd ask for your approval to sign this resolution.
Aye.
Okay. Paul, favor? Okay. As in the past, we are favored with some coordinated medical emergency direction credits. And there are two credits that are available this year from the state of Connecticut, dear Selectmen staff member. Under the provisions of the State of Connecticut Regulation Section 28-247A MB, every municipality is eligible for a regional telecommunications service credit for coordinated medical emergency direction services. In accordance with the provisions of this regulation, this credit shall be based upon the factor of 30 cents per capita. Last year, you designated the Colchester EDC as the recipient of this credit, based upon a population of 600, the Department of Public Health data. The value of Haddam Neck's credit for fiscal 2012, 13 years, $180. If you have any questions, please call. So I would recommend that we, for the Haddam Neck portion, that we allocate this credit to Haddam Neck?
I'll mic the function.
I'll favor?
Yeah.
Okay. And the second credit is with the same language. Last year, you designated the Colchester EDC as the recipient of this credit, based upon a population of 8,376. The value of Haddam's credit for fiscal year 2012, 13 is $2,512.80. And I'd recommend that we allocate this credit to...
Why, he's going to Colchester?
This was the, what we designated to Colchester last year. Yeah, last year, we, last year you designated Colchester because it was EDCC as the recipient of this credit, based on a population of 8,376. Credit for fiscal year 1213. Are you suggesting we, I think we did it because we were trying to keep that cost and we needed the credits for that ticket cost in view of the fact that Hebron was unstable and we wanted to keep those credits available. Would you prefer that we redirect the credit to the shores? Actually, you know, in...
Do we redirect to the shore?
Yeah. We should redirect that to the Valley Shore.
I think so.
Yes. Yeah.
It may have been a recent last year, but now this is the year.
Yeah. I think what might have happened, Bob, is that this actually might have been a form letter that went out, okay, indicated that we duplicated, last year we designated Colchester because there's a carbon copy of this to Valley Shore. Okay. So if you make the motion that we designate this to Valley Shore, I'll correct the, okay.
I'll send it to the Valley Shore.
Okay. All favor of that? Okay. It's parade time. So we have a, yeah, so we have a request for the... Okay, this is a traffic authority town of Haddam. Okay. My name is Sergeant Jeremiah Dunn of the Clinton Police Department. I am writing you today in order to, in the capacity of the head of your municipal traffic authority. For several years, the Clinton Police Department has assisted in escorting a motorcycle ride that is designated as a fundraiser by the Connecticut Special Olympics. The ride originates in downtown Clinton, travels through Westbrook, Deep River, Chester, Haddam, Killinworth, and then ends back in Clinton. The routes utilize Route 1, 145, Route 80, 154, and Route 1. It is a temporary, it is tentatively planned to occur again this year on Sunday, May 20th. The entire ride should last for about 12 o'clock to 1:30. The fundraiser has been a great success throughout the past years. In accordance with DOT regulations, a permit must be secured for the event to occur. DOT now requires that I get approval from each individual community legal traffic authority that the ride, that the town passes through in order to, for the permit to be issued. I'm writing to you today with the hope that you and your boards will approve this request, the authority to create government travel through your community. Attached is a copy of the DOT permit application, ride plan, and roadmap map. I would request that if your Board of Selectmen sign the attached application and return it to my attention in the provided creed statement. it to my attention in the provided proof statement. Okay, it has a spot for the first selectman's signature. And this is the... just to reiterate what they're going to do, the event will start at the Clinton Town Hall and travel eastbound on Route 1 to Clinton, turn northbound onto 145, continue north through the town of Westbrook to Route 80, Deep River, where the ride will go eastbound to Route 80 through Deep River. Ride then will proceed to 154 northbound and continue north through the towns of Chester and Haddam. So that's my...
It's not, it don't go through town for now?
No, no, no.
It's in five minutes.
Yeah, the whole ride is.
So you're going back down Route 1 to get back to...
The ride will then turn eastbound onto Route 1 in Clinton and end in the center of Clinton. So they're going to go back down Route 1 to 1.
Right.
Okay, all fair? There are no additions or transfers this evening, but we do have some tax refunds. This one is for John and Cynthia Kern, K-R-N, $26.05, and this is for automobile. Next one is for Jessica Doolittle, and that's the amount of $12.22, and that's automobile. Next one is for Karen and Roger Rossi, in the amount of $41.86, and that is real estate. Next one is for Ronald and Ralph Vanelik, in the amount of $68.89, and that is real Next one is for the Nathan Group, in the amount of $172.54, and that is real estate. A motion to accept this?
I'll make a motion.
All fair?
All right.
Here, thanks. We have no resignations this evening, but we do have an appointment for your discussion and hopefully approve. Dear Selectmen, prior to our Haddam Democratic Town Committee meeting last Wednesday, I was informed that Mr. Christopher Alexey resigned his position as a full-time member of the Wetlands Commission. As a result of this resignation, the HDTC duly voted to authorize me as chairman to recommend to Board of Selectmen that Mr. Jeremy DeCarly, unaffiliated, be appointed to replace Mr. Alexey as a full-time member of the Wetlands Commission. I've attached Mr. Carly's resume with this letter. He is currently interested in interning with KREPa and will be interning with Midstate in the future. He is also a member of the Higgins Division Group. His experiences in education, it looks like it will blend nicely with the Wetlands Commission. I'd like to entertain a motion to accept this appointment.
I'll second that.
Okay. All fair?
All right.
Good. Congratulations. I'll get you all the letter. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Under Old Business, I'm going to move a couple of things around. We had announced that in previous Selectmen's meetings that we were going to have a couple of public hearings, you know, with regard to the Code of Ethics, and then we were also going to have a informational meeting to kind of go over stuff on the transfer station and have Anchor in to do an update on it. The budget, the amount of work on the budget and some of the other issues that have come on that really backed us up. So what I would like to recommend is we take those two issues, the Code of Ethics and Transfer Station informational meeting, and push them up after May, into the month of May, earlier, as early on as possible. We can nail that down, you know, a little bit as we get closer to it.
I think the budget's priority.
Yeah.
That's going to be a big one.
Well, we can do it right after the budget is approved. I mean, we're talking about, you know, Code of Ethics has been kicking around for quite a while, we finally got it down where we want it. It's going to probably take a hearing or two for folks to get, you know, to get some questions, you know. It's not, you know, an emergency thing, you know, to run through. I'm glad we have it. We all put a lot of work into getting a good product, but, you know, it could take, you know, we could drag it a little bit. On Transfer Station, it's, you know, it is what it is, we have the, you know, everything's just going over the operational aspects of it, and it'll be open by July 1st, so we have, you know, plenty of time, you know, during the month of May, and, you know, to get everything done, to, you know, just to let folks get up on to speed as to, you know, how it's going to work and, you know, where to pick up the sticker and all that good stuff. Okay, great. One other item that we've got with regard to meetings on the new, under the new business, you'll note there's some items called solar system energy for terms. Now, this is more of an informational meeting, but we're going to have a special Board of Selectmen meeting to facilitate it, because at the end of the day, if something does occur, or we decide to pursue this, it should be with the aspects of the Board of Selectmen's recommendations. So I'm just going to read this to you with a meeting.
But is there a meeting until Friday?
No, we're going to have a meeting on March 27th, which will be next Tuesday.
That's a Tuesday.
Okay, that'll be a special board meeting at 7:00. I believe Alice is... if she hasn't already put it out, she could move it tomorrow. But this information is interesting. It cites a company by the name of Green Skies Renewable Energy, and Peter Arsenal brought this to our attention and discussed it with both the Board of Finance and the Selectmen, and basically, you know, could just kind of look and see whether or not this has any potential with savings down the road. He cited the painful school system facility. They have three solar systems installed, one that they lease and two that they own. It goes on to show, you know, some savings there for them. The person in charge of, who was going to come in to speak to us about this, his name is Michael Silverstreet, and he's from the Green Skies Renewable Energy, and he will be available to make a presentation and Q and A for the combined Board of Selectmen. He's got Board of Education here, but I think he means Board of Finance. But I think we are going to invite Board of Education as well, because this will apply this to the schools, you know.
Fair business.
Okay, so if we're interested in doing this solution this year, we need to make up our minds as soon as possible, blah, blah. So anyway, we're going to have that on 27th. Take a look at it, you know, see where it goes. If for some reason you guys can't make it, I'll certainly get you the information as soon as, you know, your schedules are changed.
So make sure, there was something except for Friday, wasn't there? Tell your email about something for Friday.
Friday during the day? No.
No, okay. So they'll be here for us on the 27th.
On the 27th.
If it's be public?
Well, if, that's what the Board of Selectmen, if anybody can come, yeah, that's what, yeah, a second.
All right.